Yeah, I got my paper right here. Ready to rock and roll.
Okay, good evening, everybody. She had to turn back around. Um, we have a proclamation for retirement. We're excited about that. We also have mayor's awards, but we're gonna roll downhill with number three. A public hearing for consideration of an application to Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Micro Enterprise Assistance Pilot Program.
How was this? All right, thank you. Uh, who's going to handle that, James or Assistant City Manager?
What was that?
Um, actually.
You wanna start that over?
We're going to, uh, we're into number three. It's consideration of a p- application to Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Micro Enterprise Assistant Pilot Program.
That's Eric.
Number three, Mr. Tisdale.
All right. So the Iowa Economic Development Authority, uh, put out this micro enterprise assistance pilot project uh, through the state's CDBG program, um, I think earlier this year. Informally, the city of Burlington was asked as one of the communities to apply for this program. We've kinda worked through the stages, uh, especially with some staff leaving and, uh, other things to get this to this point where we're, uh, looking to apply for funds, uh, through the state. The IEDA will provide up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand to assist, uh, micro enterprise, uh, micro enterprises within the community. And then, uh, I guess a micro enterprise is defined as a business with five or fewer employees, one or more whom owns the business. To qualify for this, uh, program, uh, either the owner of the business has to be considered a low to moderate income, or they must, uh, create one full-time equivalent position, uh, and hire a low to moderate income individual. Um, this is, uh, similar income, uh, requirements for a lot of our other programs. For instance, one person, uh, makes, uh, at or below thirty-eight thousand. A two-person household is forty-three thousand four hundred. A four-person is fifty-four thousand, six-person sixty-two nine. Um, so that, uh, is eighty percent of our, uh, average, uh, median income for Des Moines County. The applicant must, uh, provide fifteen percent cash ma- cash match. Uh, the city is the actual applicant, uh, to the state, and then we disperse the funds to applicants that apply to the city. They do have to provide collateral to the city. Uh, if they don't stay open for two years, then it, uh, the funds, uh, have to be paid back. Uh, if they stay open for two years or more, then it's a forgivable loan and, uh, they do not have to pay anything back. Um, so this is something the state's trying to, are trying out with a couple of communities to see if it's a successful program to spur on and grow some small businesses in communities across Iowa. If it is successful, it might be included in their annual funding. Um, but we were, one of the communities, asked to apply for this. Um, so it's still kind of a learning curve on how to, what it actually is. There's no formal ac- application to the state. We just kinda developed, uh, some, uh, information to send on to the state. We have, uh, had, I think, five or six individuals contact me, uh, that they are interested in applying for this program. Um, I've asked them for formal letters. They've sent emails to me. I've asked them for formal letters, uh, stating they qualify income-wise and would be able to provide collateral. And, uh, once we get a few of those, we'll send, uh, the application on to the state if the council approves this.
Why is the, uh, why is the city the middleman?
It's CDBG funds, uh, similar to owner occupied rehab or any other, uh, program funds that meet that income qualified, uh, criteria. Uh, we have, we are the applicant and then we, uh, I guess app does the, uh, dispersment, uh, agency to, uh, sub recipients.
We gotta get funky about it, I'm just asking a question.
How to best say that, but one of the big things we've tried to confer with the state is, uh, the collateral. How, how that is, what can be used as collateral, uh, making that clear to applicants. Uh, we do need something from them that if they don't stay open for two years and we have to pay back these funds, that we can act on that collateral and not have city, the city's funds be on the hook for that amount.
The way this state's doing this, do we have to have the four or five firm ap- applications before they'll consider an application from us?
No, it just needs proposal letters that four qualify and are willing to provide collateral.
And they have to show proof of the collateral and?
Yeah, yep.
And, and the local, and their match?
And?
Are we on the hook to, or if, if, say thirty thousand is given to a business and it goes out, goes out of business in less than two years, are, and the collateral isn't enough to cover it? Is the city on the hook for the remainder?
We'd be responsible for paying that back unless the state was willing to work with us. Being a pilot program, that's kinda the unknown, but theoretically, yes, we would be the responsible agency. And that's where we've wanted to make sure on collateral. Some of these wouldn't be, uh, likely be businesses that own, don't own their building, which is a likely collateral. If you don't own your building, we want something that is secure and we'll probably confirm with our attorney on that that is sufficient to cover that amount. And we'll have to be really careful on that.
Well, so you guys will be careful proceeding with the applicants that you?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a, I guess we're getting proposal letters now. We'll have a formal application and then have formal collateral and probably confirm with our attorney and, uh, have that go through a legal process, recording what that is and everything.
Okay.
You guys good?
I'm good.
Need a butter? Number four is a public hearing consideration of lease agreement between the city of Burlington and Most LLC for the use of Dankwart Park Pool. Tisdale?
Uh, so previously, uh, the city entered into a lease agreement August seventh, twenty seventeen, um, with Most LLC for, uh, operation of the pool during the non-city use periods. That was, uh, somewhat contingent on, uh, getting funds to put up the, uh, bubble. That was delayed, uh, slightly. They, uh, did not get the CAT grant, um, but are still, uh, looking to move forward with that. And so, uh, based on the previous agreement, it was set to expire, uh, I think this past fall. So, wanted to, uh, bring back a new agreement that has a five-year timeframe, uh, with mutual, uh, agreement for extension after that. A couple, uh, minor changes within it, uh, just, um, really stating that the bubble dome rene- remains under the ownership of the swim club. Uh, this is something that they're, uh, purchasing. It's not a city, um, bubble or dome. Uh, they are, the leasing or, um, I guess swim club are responsible for putting up and taking down the bubble at their sole expense and, uh, from their organization. Uh, and, uh, I guess if this agreement does not, uh, continue or is, uh, uh, canceled for any reason, it's not the city's or staff's intention to continue to operate this unless some other leasing is, uh, found to operate the, the dome or bubble during the non-lease period. So, um, we just wanted to make that, uh, clear in the agreement. We don't have the funds to, um, do that, uh, the staff to operate it. Um, that's not the intent. I don't think that's the intent of anyone, but if for some reason the leasing cancels and, uh, say there's a period of time where no one's available to operate it, uh, I guess staff's intention is we're not gonna operate it. They'd have to find a new leasing. Uh, the previous lease called for a twenty-five hundred, uh, monthly, uh, lease amount, and that was, uh, for eight months of the year, uh, which told, uh, twenty thousand, uh, a year. The current lease, uh, agreement is, uh, two thousand a month, so five hundred less a month, but it's on a twelve-month basis, uh, recognizing that they do operate swim lessons during the summer and, uh, practices and, uh, just an easier thing to calculate on a monthly basis on and, for an entire year than, uh, when that starts and stops, so. Uh, I think those are the primary changes.
There is one other cha- primary change.
Which one was that?
Uh, the, the contribution that we're providing back was?
Separate agreement.
Okay, well, that was for three years?
Yeah.
And this is written to where it would be a five-year?
Yeah, that's number seven.
Okay.
Unfortunately, but yeah, I, they wanna group that now. The city canceled the agreement, um, for number seven, very related as well. That was, uh, supposed to re- uh, count towards the CAT grant, uh, application. Um, the use of the twenty-five thousand we had for, uh, pump improvements and then the reimbursement of the lease, uh, over a three-year period from September eighteenth to April twenty, from September of twenty eighteen through April of twenty twenty-one. Uh, so there's new, a new, uh, request, uh, for contribution from the city, um, for, uh, towards the dome project, including pool deck improvements. Uh, between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four, we've had some initial discussions with the swim club on that. And, um, I guess our, one concern is, uh, with the continued or annual or year-round use of the pool, uh, we have some equipment out there that is aging and, uh, we don't have anything in the five-year CIP for replacement or how to, how to cover any replacement costs for that. Um, our recommendation would be to retain a portion of that, whether it's, uh, a month or two, to build up a fund where we could, uh, have money available if a heater needs, goes out, needs replaced. Uh, we just don't have that programmed in our CIP at this time. And we, based on all the cuts we've had, I don't anticipate that being?
And the hardest part about the, the change there for, for our, our operational standpoint, two years ago when we were originally doing that, or year and a half, whatever it was, uh, hotel motel tax is what's primarily funding this. Between, I mean, mo- a lot of these activities are funded either by hotel motel or local option sales tax for the capital needs. Uh, both of those are significantly lower than they were when the original lease was done. Uh, and, I mean, the capital needs for keeping all of our facilities haven't gotten any less. So, now having an agreement that extends, uh, the loss of that revenue with the potential for having additional strain on the pool with, with things that we might have to replace and not having any funds to help cover that, uh, it, there's a little, there is a level of concern. And with that in mind, how much were you ho- really hoping to, at least to maintain?
Well, we, and maybe Ryan can talk a little bit too here with the swim club, but a couple of the items we've identified are pool heater, which is sixteen years old. That's a round of thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar cost. Our hot water heater, uh, is ten years old, it's five to six thousand dollars, and then just some general piping and plumbing. And we've had some discussions with the swim club on this, so.
Yeah, Ryan Ritter, one seventeen, Glendale. Kinda what, what we've kinda went back and forth. We understand that the five-year, um, getting all of the five-year is, is gonna be rough because of the g- paying something if something breaks down or, or something like that. Um, the last thing that I, I talked to, to Eric about was, what if, um, the lease is gonna start in August or September of next year? So what if, what if we start, what if we go August of next year and then that'll leave five months on two thousand nineteen? And the first five months all go to the city and nothing comes back? And then the remainder of the five years comes to us, so four years and, and seven months would come to us, but the first ten thousand would go to the city. One thing, one thing we also have to look at is that on this, it's not the city's sole responsibility to replace this stuff. They're just helping replace it. I think it's partially our responsibility too, also. And so, I don't know if that's a fifty-fifty. Um, I think it, some of that depends on when it comes up, we, we talk about that and see what, what that is. But you guys aren't gonna be on the hook for a hundred percent of, if anything, I think when I read the last lease agreement, it was only, if it was under a certain dollar figure, it was, it was on you guys, but over a certain amount, then, then it was, had to come back to council and we had to negotiate or, uh, figure something out on that. So we, we will have something in on the replacements also. So I don't want you to think that the pool heater for thirty-five thousand goes out and you guys are stuck for thirty-five thousand. I mean, that's, that's not necessarily the, the case there.
So?
So we had ten thousand dollars. If there's anything over that, we'd have to have some discussion. I guess the concern, again, being if it happens in spring and then both parties aren't able to come up with funds for a couple of months, then we're not able to open during the summer or something, so.
That's why I kinda liked?
Not having those funds on hand.
Yeah, that's kinda why I liked the idea of if, what if the initial, the first part of it goes to you guys, whether that's the first five months or the first six months, whatever you guys think that is. And then you guys would have cash on it. If it's two years, you get two months a year, so you're getting, uh, four thousand dollars a year. What if it happens in the second year? You know, I mean, it, I think it's better to say the amount that, that we need and then those first months go to you and then, and then the rest of the five months.
Is that possible, Jim? We can put that in reserve like that, or?
We already have, we have a pool account at this point, so.
I mean, ultimate, ultimately what it comes to, you guys were in a spot where the concrete was gonna have to get replaced this year. So, I mean, it, they, they came and said the concrete had to get replaced, whether that's a patchwork that you did or something. The concrete is now getting paid for by us instead of you guys, so whatever it is. And that, that came in significantly higher than the hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted for the concrete. We're looking at at least a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just for the flat work on not even the, the?
Right.
The other part. So, I mean, we're, it, it is getting paid for and it's not coming out of the city's pocket at this point where you guys were on the hook for a hundred thousand dollars of concrete, so.
Hey, quit talking that kinda talk in here. Hey, look, it's good to know that we, that moving forward though, that we do have an understanding of a partnership here and that. Um, and I understand you guys are doing good stuff too, uh, you know? I, I think we, we all get that, but we just wanna continue with that partnership, not because we're trying to squeeze you guys, but just because, uh, Jim stated it very clear. Uh, things are gonna really start tightening up and eventually, you know, we, we've gotta start saying no and start reconsidering some things, so it's gotta start at some point in time. So, we're gonna start reconsidering things, but I, me personally, I do, as lo- as long as they feel like they can swing it and they're good, and I do feel comfortable with, uh, knowing who we're dealing with and that you guys aren't gonna, uh, play hide and seek when the time comes that we do need some stuff, so.
Hey, the one, the one thing I wanna say, when we have the money in the bubble, it's as much on us to want to keep that pool running, because that's where, I mean, i- it's gonna be as important to us to keep it up and running as it is for you guys, so. One, when he mentioned the, if, if the, the current, the current leasing leaves, we're looking to get another leasing immediately because the city paid for, or people from the city paid for this bubble and we need to keep it running, so.
I agree.
That's kinda.
James, you was gonna, you were gonna say something?
The contract language in here for unexpected costs, is that?
Um, under, I think eleven.
It's under eleven.
Eleven.
It does have it in our sole authority to decide whether to, um, do it or not, but it doesn't have any discussion about any sharing of costs.
Okay, and it, I think, I think what I saw on the first one, it just said up to ten thousand dollars, and maybe that was just us talking. If it went over the ten thousand, that it would have to go back to city council and it would kinda be some sort of partnership there on that, so.
It has nothing, but there's nothing in the agreement the way it's written.
This is shared, yeah.
So?
And, and I guess that's kinda the concern that has come up from Eric without having something that you have cash, come in, some level of cash coming in to help to offset the, uh, the increased, uh, hit that comes on, uh, just the usage of the facility for the pumps and, and everything else. We need to be able to have some way to, to capture a, a, a repayment mechanism on the increased potential there. And I, I don't know what the adequate amount is. Um, you were talking about ten thousand over the life of the, the five-year contract, and I don't know what you were thinking about, Eric, if that's close or?
Well, it depends on what that cost share is, 'cause the bigger concerns we have are the heaters, the pool heaters, thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars, and the water heaters, I mean, five to six thousand. So we're talking potentially forty thousand, could last five years or could fail next winter. We just don't know. And if it's over that ten thousand, maybe there's some language in there. And it says the city reserves right not to make repair or cancel, or maybe something added, request those funds from the leasing or some cost share from the leasing. I don't know what that would be.
I, I guess I would just as soon have some kinda language worked out where there's a mechanism involved up to a certain level. It would be, you know, fit, whether it's fifty-fifty, sixty-forty, 'cause it is our property. Uh, but there should be some kinda language there up to a certain level. Then when it gets beyond the whoa factor, we all sit down and say, wait a minute, Lou, what, what were you doing here?
I think part of the concern that I would have from their side, that a lot of the costs are, they're, they're, they are ours to do. It's, it's only certain components, and I don't know how we have it, I don't know if that's some discussion that you need to have, if, to think about a way to, just to cr- create a mechanism for a potential cost share on, on certain things where we know, recognize that there's increased risk for us.
And I guess the way I look at it is, it, it's gonna have to come back to you guys at, at that point. Anyway, if something like that does go wrong, it's gonna have to come back to you guys before we do anything, and we're gonna wanna keep it moving, so we're gonna have to negotiate at that point, one way or the other, um, to, to kinda get going. And I, and I don't have any fears with that as long as it's the same leadership involved, but you know how it happens when leadership changes, and so that's the only reason for maybe having some of that.
I would just rather, I would just rather have some, just so we got it, so it's, you know, so we don't have to skip anything.
I would be, I would be, I would be okay with having some sort of share in there. I don't know that I'm necessarily a hundred percent comfortable with defining if it's a fifty-fifty or, uh, you know, the, the exact amount. I'm good with it saying a share between the two.
Shared cost.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a dollar amount that, if we kept a portion of the, the rental amount back, is there a po- a, a dollar amount annually that would be an, an amount that you would say, I, we feel, we don't know what the exact risk is on an annual basis, but this we can at least accept as being compensation for that?
Maybe if we could sit down with Brad and discuss this, we can bring something back to council. Ultimately, though, the water heater, the city can operate the pool in the summer with all the water heater. Um, it's not ideal, I mean, not all pools are heated. It, I mean, you guys can't operate without a water heater, so.
And most of it's going back on.
So, that would go back on them, a, a pool heater to, for our showers and stuff, that's required by code, so. Being able to cover those costs and have something to cover that, part of that water heater cost.
You figure out, you figure out what, what you're comfortable with on our end, you know what I'm saying? From a city's perspective and, and get with, uh, get with Ritter, work it out. Dude, we, we trust you, man. Now that you're shaving, I have total confidence in you, so.
We appreciate, appreciate your guys' willingness to work with us on this too.
You guys good?
Yes.
I'm good.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay. James, anything else you wanna add on that?
I think, just as we're talking, I mean, the pool heater ultimately is more needed by them, so, I mean, our cost wouldn't be that full, thirty thousand, and we could still operate in the summer, but we would need the hot water heater and some plumbing and some other things. And obviously, if the pool heater went out, we'd still wanna replace it, 'cause we don't want, we have expectation that we have a warm pool, so. But I think it's something we could work with them on and bring something back.
Work your magic, Mr. Tisdale. Okay, we're good? All right, brings us to number five, motion for preliminary adoption. This is second reading of an ordinance amendment to ordinance number thirty-two twenty, an ordinance creating the Sunrise West Plan Unit Development PUD overlay district by making changes to section four land use requirements. And, uh, Eric?
This again applies to the lots they're looking to plot there, um, off of Cambridge Drive. Uh, they've recently put in the roadway there extending north of Messiah. The changes to the PUDs, uh, primarily apply to the creation of five individual lots versus one large lot in the past, uh, just laying out what the setbacks are to these property lines. Um, previously, all of their development has been on one large lots in each block, and now, uh, primarily based just on taxes and how the property taxes are. Uh, the old, uh, structures are grandfathered in, but the new ones, if they're, they have more than three structures on one lot, then they would, uh, be taxed commercially versus residentially. Uh, so this just lays out what the setbacks are for each of those five lots, uh, in the fifth edition.
No changes from the last time, we talked about it then?
Nope.
So, good.
Need a butter?
I'm good.
Right on. Number six is motion for, uh, motion for preliminary adoption, second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one sixty-one, housing code of the city of Burlington Municipal Code. Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, no changes from the previous reading on this as well. Again, a couple, um, I guess seemingly minor changes, adding a definition for replacement window, changing what the, um, taking out the listing, the minimum, uh, opening for egress. Uh, we still have the standards of five square feet at grade level and five point seven elsewhere. Uh, updating the lot, electrical outlets, our electrical requirements to match what our electrical code is. Um, taking out the hardware for shades and draperies, uh, as a requirement of the owner, and then, uh, adding the gas piping, um, can follow our, uh, other adopted city code. The electrical and gas piping are trying to make it, uh, more congruent with our other codes and, uh, which have relaxed over the years, and, uh, so it's less stringent on the owners and more options there.
What if the window's pink? Can they still put it in?
You were late, by the way.
You guys good with that?
Yeah, no changes from the last time, yes. You, you all right?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Annie, are you okay? All right, we're gonna move to the consonant of the? It is, Michael Jackson, thanks, man. Recognizing. Number one is a, we did number seven, but I'll read it. Resolution approving contribution to Dankwart Park Pool Dome Project. We covered it.
Okay.
We're good. Number one, resolution approving nuisance abatements for areas properties. You guys good?
Yep.
Peanut butter, you didn't answer.
I was?
Just making sure.
It was a loud hit.
Number two is a resolution approving partial release of retention monies for phase five of the flood wall. Assistant City Manager, Nick McGregor.
Good evening. Uh, this resolution will, uh, release part of the retention monies, uh, for the flood wall project. Typically, you don't see this partial release. Usually, we release the retention all at one time, uh, but because of the substantial completion that we're at, and there's still some button-up things that we wanna make sure we hold some retention monies back until those are completed, this is why you're seeing this happen. Um, so, the original contract price for the fl- phase five of the flood wall was six point two, uh, million dollars. You can see that in, in the packet there. I, I submitted that with all the V and K information. Through change orders and quantity adjustments, the end, uh, bill for the flood wall will be six million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Um, in the attachments, then, you also see a breakdown of the change orders. Uh, there was total of forty change orders. Um, the largest quantity of the, uh, the difference between the original contract price and then the final price was in the H piles. It was two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of that three hundred and, uh, sixty-four thousand dollars. As we got to the north end of the phase of the project, uh, the depths that they were finding were not what they needed structurally, so they had to add on H pile to it. Other than that, I, I mean, the, the change order list was at, uh, five point eight-six percent of the, of the project. We budgeted ten percent. Um, so I feel like we were kind of in the realm with, especially as much underground work that we were doing, um, in the realm of, of, of this project. The, the amount that we're holding back is seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, that is being held back for the, there's some crack repairs in the wall that need to be fixed. Uh, I think they're landing on what kind of, um, filler or epoxy, what, what they're gonna use to fix the crack.
Okay.
Um, we, we have received, or the contractor has received, a new seal for the bottom of the flood wall. When we installed the flood wall, we realized that there were some issues with the flushness of the concrete and the way that everything sat, and the rubber seal that they gave us was not quite thick enough to get everything clamped down and create airtight. So, we've got more of a foam seal, it's a little bit thicker, it'll help, uh, close the gap between the bottom of the panel and then the concrete. So we received that, and then there's a, there was an issue at the wet well. The valve to close off the storm sewer network in the, on the riverfront from the Hawkeye, uh, there was an issue within the, the gear. I ca- I, well, I can't, can't think of the word or what it's called, but there was, essentially, there was a way to wheel it down and there was a, there was an issue in that component. So that's being fixed, uh, and so that, I guess that's the reason why we're keeping some of the money on hand, uh, from the full release of retention.
Why, why the seventy-five grand? Because to be honest with you, Nick, I'd rather hold, I, I wish we held back more.
Um, the seventy, the, to hold back retention funds, um, is to have enough money to be able to complete what's remaining of the project, um, should the contractor not fulfill that obligation. Um, and after talking with the engineer, we feel that seventy-five thousand dollars is enough or more than enough to cover the issues that are remaining.
Really? 'Cause I'm, I'm just wondering how they're gonna, you know, they're gonna epoxy cracks from some concrete that they just recently poured? You know what I'm saying? I mean, to me, um, I, I'm really kind of, uh, I'm kinda frustrated with that, you know, that, that we've got issues with them already. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and the reason why we're making sure that they get taken care of so they don't become a maintenance nightmare moving forward. I mean, that wall is structurally sound. The amount of steel work that's inside of the wall, it's not gonna have an issue. It does not look the greatest to have cracks on a brand-new concrete wall. I understand that. But when you're pouring fourteen-hundred foot of wall, that's all connected the way it is, you're gonna have cracks. I mean, Agency Street has cracks in some of the roads. Now, there's a little bit different way that they are able to handle that. They put controlled cracks in there by cutting it. Well, with a vertical wall like that, you have, uh, when you pour, you have your form cracks, but you don't, you don't cut cracks into the wall that way, so. I don't know the reason why there's as much cracking there a- a- as there is, but the engineering group is not concerned about the wall structurally. I just would like it to be taken care of so we don't have issues moving forward with it. I just would like it to be taken care of, so we don't have issues moving forward with freeze thaw and water getting into that cracking.
Yep.
Um, moving forward, is there maybe a design thing that could be done to, to help prevent that? I, I don't know that. But I, yes, it's not ideal to have cracks in the wall, and I know that there's been a lot of people that have been concerned about that. But from a structural standpoint, from a operations of a flood wall, I, I am not concerned about the cracks. But we would like to make sure that they are corrected in the best way possible.
You guys good? All right. I'm turning the page. Uh, we have a hearing set for, uh, December seventeen, consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand nineteen Deadwood and Gladys White Park renovations, and consideration of an ordinance rezoning a portion of property locally known as sixteen twenty-one Dodge Street from R two single-family residential transitional to R four multifamily residential zoning district. Mr. Tison, you wanna talk about that or anything? You're good, right?
Yeah.
A treasurer's report. Annette, class of eighty-seven. Come on down. If you guys haven't guessed yet, she graduated in nineteen eighty-seven. Was an excellent class, by the way.
No, it's good as nineteen eighty, but it was okay.
I don't appreciate you right now.
Okay, again, there's two treasurer's reports in here, June's, which has not changed. The au- our audit report is with the auditors, so hopefully, the next time I'm here, it will be finalized and we'll be good. But the, these should be the final numbers, I mean, as far as we, we know, for June. So, nothing's changed.
Okay.
And then October's treasurer's report is in there. And, um, I didn't see anything unusual. I mean, you know, in December, we'll be doing our transfers that will cover some of the things, like we have some capital project accounts where we have transfers that we do twice a year, so we haven't done some of those. And that's like the parks equipment and stuff, things like that. Um, other than that, I don't know, the, the normal things that we are always a month behind is VM and property maintenance charges and some of our grants that are reimbursement basis. But I don't know. Have you guys seen anything else that you thought you wanted to ask about?
I just thought we had more money than that. Are you sure you didn't make some withdrawals with the debit card?
Pretty positive. Yeah, pretty sure.
I wish we did have more money. You guys good?
I'm good. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Annette. Uh, number two. My favorite library. Where are you going? Oh, okay. My favorite library. I saw her at Hy-Vee the other day, guys, and, uh, you guys have to hear this. I saw her in Hy-Vee, the chief, chiefs. I see her in Hy-Vee. I'm short, you know, I just, I was just short cash. I needed to buy a few things. Are you listening? Listen, I'm short. I said, Rhonda, Rhonda. I said, I'm gonna be a little short. I said, could you, you know, wait for me? I'm short a few things, and she just took off in a dead sprint away from me, and so I had to put some things back. I just wanna let you know, I really appreciate all that you do. Bless your heart. What do you got?
Thank you. Well, good evening. Um, I always appreciate the opportunity to get to come and go over the annual report with you each year, so thank you for this time tonight. Um, we do a fiscal year report, and you have a paper copy there in front of you, and we'll be putting this on our website as well. So, the numbers here are all fiscal year eighteen, and the activities in the written report are all fiscal year eighteen activities as well. In my presentation, I will mention a few things that have happened since June, um, because we're five months into the new fiscal year and this new stuff that's been happening, I'd like to share, so we will include some of that. Um, annual reports are great for including a lot of numbers, so we'll start with that. In the written report, you'll see there are some numbers for, that are year-long numbers. And, um, those are always great, but one of the things that I like to do is break that down, 'cause those big numbers are a lot easier to, for me to visualize at least, when I break them down into a day. So, divided those numbers all out by the number of days we're open for the year, so you could get a sense of an average day. So, on any given day at our library, a hundred, one thousand four hundred and ninety-one items, total collection uses. It's getting a little harder to talk about that number now that we have a lot of electronic uses, and I'll talk a little about that as we go through these. It used to be that the only thing included in collection use was when you actually physically walked into the library and took something off the shelf and took it home with you. That was collection use. And now, collection use can mean a lot of different things. So, we'll break that down a little bit. Over six hundred books checked out on an average day at the library. So, those are that physically coming in, picking up something and checking it out kind of books. Um, or four hundred and fifty videos checked out in a day. And this is where we get into, those ones are a little harder to group. Uh, two hundred and fifty-nine successful retrievals of electronic information. And I use that term because that's what the state library uses, and they define how we count those, um, as well. But those are the things that we offer through our website, those twenty-four-seven resources that you can get onto any time, from home, from work, anywhere that you can get on internet, you can use these resources. But they can be a lot of different things. Um, so, Learning Express, somebody could, one of those, four hundred and fifty-nine uses in a day, could be somebody taking a practice test on Learning Express. And that has all kinds of practice tests, from plumber's tests to, um, SAT practice tests, things like that. Um, it could be somebody researching their family on Heritage Quests or Ancestry that we ha- make available. Some of our newer things, um, are the Chilton's Library, so if you like to tinker with vehicles, I know, and growing up, we always had a Chilton's manual, 'cause my dad had an old Mustang in the, in the garage, and he was always working on. So, people use those all the time and still use those, um, whether it's an older car, newer car.
How long have you guys been doing the Chilton's?
We've had those for just, um, the state library now, uh, we get them through them. It's a, a buying agreement with them, so we do kind of consortium statewide, and they just changed over to these new set of offerings about a year or so ago. It was just like in twenty-seventeen, so not too long.
That's right.
We do still have the big print volumes, if you know those, they're always real thick books. Um, but it's really handy to go online from anywhere you need it and be able to just pull up the page you want, print it, and take it out to the garage with you, rather than carrying around those big volumes. So, we offer those. Um, that number could also include somebody who's learning a new language through Transparent Languages. That's another one that we get through the state buying program. The, that program also includes, um, Gale products, which are a lot of articles and things that you can access. So, there's specialized things, like a whole section of nursing materials, but then also a section of materials that you can access to research personal health issues as well, you know, just for kind of the layperson. Um, that number can also include somebody who is getting one-on-one tutoring through tutor dot com from three to ten every day. You can go on and access a tutor on the other end of the computer there, um, and, and work on your specific issue that you wanna work on, whether it's math or science, which tend to be the most commonly used things, but it can be any topic, um, as well. They just use a whiteboard and go back and forth with the student, um, and go over their homework or learn new skills.
It's like finding the one house that always gives out big candy bars.
Yeah. Yeah, that was their October, uh, promotion, um, that they were doing. And then we also offer Value Line, which, um, if you're a stock market investor, you might find, find useful. But so that four hundred and fifty-nine number is all kinds of different things that people could be doing, um, in that. So, just to go back to that list, um, some more physical things, um, checking out of audio recordings. Um, those are gonna be music CDs as well as the books on CD. Um, and we're not investing as much in music CDs anymore. Um, and we were just talking about this this morning at work, and coworker was saying, he doesn't even have a CD player in his car. It didn't come with one. And so that is gonna be something that over time is probably gonna phase out, though. We'll say, we didn't get rid of VHS tapes until about two years ago at the library, because we always are serving those people, too, who don't have the latest in technology. Um, so as long as people are still using it, we keep it in the collection until it gets to the point where it's just too small of a collection or too little use, and we get rid of it. So, we still have those. Um, it's still a pretty good number, fifty-four items a day, um, being checked out. Um, and then we get another one, those materials downloaded. And those include some other online resources that you can access. So, Freegal, you can stream music five hours a day with your library card or download three, um, I, three songs in a week with your library card through Freegal. So, again, that number, it's, it could be somebody streaming music, it could be somebody downloading music. Could be somebody using the eBooks, the audios through a Bridges program, which is another statewide consortium we participate in. Um, Zineo is magazines people could be downloading, so a lot of different things people can do with downloads now. And there's even a little bit of video in the Bridges Consortium, and that is something that a lot of libraries are getting into now. There's some new services being offered to libraries for streaming video. So, it's something we're looking at, whether that makes sense to start offering some of that. Um, and then magazines, these are print magazines, not the downloadable ones you get through Zineo, but thirty-six a day, uh, check out. That's another collection that shrunk a little bit over the last few years, as magazines have just, some have stopped printing. Um, but still gets used pretty well. And then we have the other category, 'cause there's always stuff that has to go into a miscellaneous, but six items a day fall into that other category. And in fiscal year eighteen, our main thing in the, in the other category was our mobile hotspots. Um, it's a fairly new thing that we offer now. Those tend to be checked out most of the time. They check out for a week, and you can get a hotspot to take home if you don't have internet at home, if your internet's out for a while, if you're traveling. They're very popular, um, and get used, um, quite a bit. This other category is expanding, and I'll talk about that later in the presentation, so there'll be some new things falling into that category. But it also includes equipment. We've had equipment available for checkout for, um, for some time there. We have a, a DVD player that people can check out, or a CD player. So, if you don't have one anymore and you wanna use our music CDs, you can check that out. Um, also, on any given day, twenty-eight items are added to the collection. So, if you come in the library, it's a good idea to check out those new sections, because there's always something going up that's new and going on the shelf. We get about six hundred and forty people who visit in a day to the library, and while there, they ask about a hundred and forty-four questions in a day. And those don't include directional questions, so we aren't including the, where's the bathroom, those kind of things where we can point people. Um, those are all questions where we're helping somebody find, uh, answer to a question, um, by going online, taking them to a resource, helping them find the book that they wanted. Um, or helping them with equipment or, um, computers. A lot of it ends up being helping people to scan an item, 'cause they need to email it to someone, or helping somebody upload a resume, and those kind of things. So, a lot of different kinds of things fall under that reference question category. And a hundred and ninety-three logins to our public computers, as well as a hundred and thirty-six Wi-Fi logins. So, a lot of people coming in to use the technology. Um, and again, a lot of people like to come and use technology there, because we're there, and so if they run into issues, um, we're there to help them. Um, and we've got the printer, and, you know, we can help with those kind of things, too.
How many computers are you up to now?
We have thirty, I think it's about thirty-two, maybe if you count the one. Yeah, there's one over in the youth area, so.
Are you letting people check out laptops?
We do have laptops to check out, but only for use in the building. You have to show your library card at the help desk, and then you can use it there in the building. So, sometimes people like to do, to do that as well. Um, then, um, on a typical average day, ninety-eight people are participating in some kind of class or event. And this is things that happen in the library as well as when we go out into the community. So, we do a lot of visits to schools, and so some of those numbers are reflected there. Um, eighteen uses of the meeting rooms on a given day. Um, so as you know, we have our big meeting rooms, our little meeting rooms. We have companies that like to come and do their, uh, their job interviews.
You have eighteen a day?
Mm-hmm, uses, yeah, mm-hmm. And we have the two big rooms, and then we have the, um, eight smaller rooms. Count those for a second, but, so we have the eight, uh, smaller rooms. And so sometimes I say that people are doing job interviews there, there's, um, there's businesses that come and do staff trainings at the library. But then there's community organizations that, that use those rooms for their, their meetings, um, as well. And then individuals who just like to have a room to go in and do some work, where they don't have the distractions of home, or whatever that may be, so. And then, um, four new library accounts open on an average day. So, that's people coming into the community that are new, but it's also, we often hear people who've said, yeah, I've been in the library in years, but I just retired, and I've got a little more time to read now, or, um, you just haven't been in, but I heard you have this resource I wanted to use, so, um, lots of people coming in, getting new accounts. So, we'll offer about three library classes or events in a day. These last two are interlibrary loan, um, program. And so, we will borrow about three items every day, and we loan out about four. And that's to be expected, I think, 'cause we're a bigger library than a lot of libraries in Iowa, and so we have a stronger collection. So, um, more libraries are coming to us than we're going to them, but it is still pretty even there. It's not real off, some, some libraries, the amount that they send out is a lot more than they bring in, or vice versa. So, we're, we're pretty even there. But if you ever don't find something you want at the library, Tiara does a great job. She will hunt it down. She just recently got a couple of things from the Library of Congress, 'cause we're the only last resort, um, only people that would loan it. So, she'll keep working until she finds somebody that, um, will get it for you, if at all possible. So, some of the things that we don't count are things like people who come in to make copies, to fax, to scan things. Um, the kids who come in and are playing with the train table. There's a lot of activity that goes on that just doesn't get counted in these numbers. Um, but this gives you a, a general overview of, so what's a typical day like? I'm gonna hit a few highlights from the year and things that we've been doing. Um, the best way to really get more in-depth with what we've done over the last year is to read the monthly reports that we do. I know you guys get those emailed to you, but we also put them up on our website. So, if anybody's interested in learning more, that's one way to do that, is can, um, read up on those. But then also, I love talking about the library, as you all know, um, and I love showing people the library. So, if anyone in the community wants to come, a community group wants to come, I'm always happy to show people around or answer questions, too. So, I can go into more depth on anything people are interested in. One of the things we always talk about when I do an annual reports or any kind of presentation is literacy development. It's, it's been the core, one of the core things libraries have done, um, forever. So, it's really important to what we do is supporting children and families. And it's one of the, the four goals in our, um, new strategic plan is supporting children and families. Um, and you see, we, we offer programs starting from birth and going all the way into teenage years.
A thousand books before kindergarten?
Thank you. That is the one. I was just gonna point, 'cause that's our new one. That one just started in September. So, that is not fiscal year eighteen, but I still wanted to tell you about it today. It's a new reading incentive program. Um, a lot of libraries are doing it throughout the country. Um, other libraries in Iowa are already doing this program. So, it's not, it's not a thing that we made up, um, but we're really excited to be part of it now and doing this. It's kinda like summer reading, but where there's incentives along the way to read. But it's a program that families can sign up for when their child is first born, or any time before they go into kindergarten. And if they, as they read, um, they'll get incentives every hundred books that they read. And it seems like a whole lot, but really with, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, a couple of years, and, you know, bedtime stories, most kids don't want just one, they want two, three, four, or five. So, it, it, they add up really quickly to get to that thousand. Um, and we also do recognize that children like to read the same story over and over. So, people, people are welcome to count that same favorite book, um, every time they read it, so. So, that's a new thing. We already have, um, well over a hundred, um, people who've signed up just in the first couple of months. So, we're excited to be offering that. Appreciate Allison coming up with that. Allison also is thanked for, um, the Family Night Unplugged. In the last fiscal year, those really became, uh, a regular in our program lineup now. Um, so every month, we try to offer a Family Night Unplugged. Um, we had Des Moines County Conservation come, and see the picture there with the butterflies? He's did a whole program on butterflies. We just added a butterfly garden at the library, so it tied in there. We do the Family Fortnight, where families come and build forts and go read together, and they do crafts, and, um, there's the, the stuffed animal sleepovers. A lot of these, um, things. She just did one this month that was cooking, brought in someone to talk about healthy foods and make, uh, meals, uh, snacks together with the family. So, just, it's really a neat program. I, I love this new addition, because it's a great community feel. It's a, it's after hours on a Friday, um, and it's, so it's just the families there at the library. And we've got a lot of people who like to come to all of them, but it's, it's free, it's fun, it's something families could do together. So, we're really happy to be able to, to offer that. We have, um, other special events that we do, too, like our Pumpkin Palooza that we just had. You know, in the written report here, because it's fiscal year eighteen activities only, it mentions the second one. We've already had the third one, um, just last month. Um, and we get two, three hundred people who come to that. Um, and it's, again, a free fun activity for kids to come and do with their families. We have our Comic-Con. This year, we called it Geek-tastic and partnered with, um, Capital Theater and the Art Center and other businesses downtown to make it into a bigger event. Um, again, a free fun thing for families to do. We did Valen- um, Valentine's cookie decorating this month, uh, next month, excuse me, in December. This month, uh, next month, excuse me, in December, of course, there's all sorts of fun things you can do in December. So we have a Grinch Fest, we've got our traditional holiday sing-along. Um, and we have a, an early New Year's Eve party. So for people who might want to celebrate in the afternoon instead of staying up late, um, we're doing that. So this is just another area that we've really been focusing on is, um, having things available for, for families to do together. And I think every year I talk about the Ticos kids when I do an report, but they really are a highlight for me every year. Um, this is the Teens Inspiring Change Optimism and Service. It's our library teen advisory board mixed with our Junior Optimist Club. And, um, they came out to City Day and did face painting and storytelling. They do the flag route, so they just on Veterans Day, put up a hundred flags at sunrise and took down a hundred flags at sunset. A really dedicated group of kids, um, they do a lot. They did, um, UNICEF, they went out and did trick-or-treating for UNICEF this year. So lots of things that they do. And we're really proud of them, um, also because they just did a fundraiser, a pancake fundraiser, where they raised funds for some of them to go to the Optimist Conference that's coming up in Des Moines.
How mu- how many of, how many are involved in that total?
I think this year, she's got about thirty. Becky, this, this school year now goes once a month, sets up a table in the cafeteria at the high school right around the time there's going to be a Ticos meeting and her numbers have gone up. So that's been a really good way for her to get the word out, um, about that program. Um, so yeah, they're going to go to this, this conference. And then we also just had, um, a librarian from Mount Pleasant come and say they were wanting to emulate this um, and do a similar group at their library. Um, so Becky does a lot of great work with those teens. In addition to these things, she also goes out into schools, the before and after-school program, goes into the classrooms. Um, and she got a STEM grant this year, uh, five thousand dollars worth of materials, um, she got. Tools and things like that, so she can offer some new programs at the library. Um, and got training along with that too. So that's been a really great thing. And then we always, um, remind people that lifetime learning, it's not just about, um, the kids, though I talk about that a lot. Um, and so in the last fiscal year, our specifically for seniors program, we changed the name to First Friday because we had some people who weren't seniors yet that wanted to come, so we didn't want them to feel left out. It's a very popular program with musicians and historians and others who, who come for that. We started a book club, Beyond the Book. And that started in summer of twenty seventeen. It was going to just be a book club for the summer and, uh, people enjoyed it so much, they decided to keep it going and it's continued to grow. We also, this, this summer in twenty eighteen, did a Made in Burlington series that was very popular. So the big group up there, um, is when we had someone from Sturzies come and talk. Um, we had a few other, excuse me, local businesses come and talk about things that are made here in Burlington as well. So we'd like to bring that program back and do it again because clearly there was a lot of interest. And I mentioned before, getting out into the community. Um, we are doing a lot more outreach. That's one of our goals, is to get out and do more in the community. So we even have a pop-up library banner now, so when we go out, you can tell it's the library. Um, so the third Tuesday of each month, we go to Hy-Vee and set up at a table and answer questions. It's billed as a Tech Tuesday, but people can ask about anything library-related. We've been going to the farmer's markets, we go to senior fairs, we've been in the parades. Um, and again, going into the schools. Thanks to the Murray Foundation and the Friends, we're continuing, I think we're probably about to our twelfth year now, um, that we do outreach into all the preschools in the area and do story times every month. So that's been a great program as well. But it, it's a nice opportunity for us to take what we do out to people. Um, rather than making them always come to us, so it spreads the word and, and gets to those folks. Now I mentioned I, I would, uh, talk about a few things that are new. I've mentioned a few. One of the things that is, are new, um, is our Create Collection. Um, this is something other libraries have been doing. Some call it their Library of Things. Um, so checking out items rather than just books and those kind of things. So cake pans, um, that's one of our, our new things, Cake Pan Collection. And Cake Pan Collections have been around for a while. Um, Keakuck has one, North Liberty has one, a lot of, um, libraries in Iowa, um, have them. And I don't think we would have done it except that we had somebody donate fifty-five cake pans to us. So we said, okay, I guess we have a collection now.
Cake pan collections, people go around to see those?
Hmm?
People?
You can check it out.
And you can make a cake.
Yeah. So if you, if you want to make an R-two-D-two cake, but you don't want to have to buy the cake pan, you could check it out from the library. And we have had people checking out the cake pans, which is great. Um, and we've just, rather than just calling it our Cake Pan Collection, um, we decided we wanted to be about crea- being creative and creating things. And so we've also added cookie cutters. We have other kinds of things coming out that we're going to add. Um, the conference I went to, they, um, libraries talking about tools that they loaned out, fishing poles, different things that they're kind of getting creative with that Library of Things idea. So we'll see where that goes, but that's something that's new. And we've done some programming with it too, so we had a cake decorating class to go along with these new tools that people can check out at the library, so. And then we did just, um, get through Iowa Public Television, three backpacks that we won when we were at the conference, um, that have STEM-related activities in them. And we'll have those available for kids to check out and take home and be able to do activities. So we're going to be adding more of those kind of objects that people can check out. So the numbers and the activities, I think are all really important. But for me, what it really comes down to is this kind of impact that we have when we hear these statements, where people see the library as a lifeline, where they see it as an asset to the community and where they see it as a welcoming and safe place. And being able to be there for people, to provide opportunities for them and to help them be successful. To me, that's what it really all comes down to. So thank you for listening to our annual report, um, this year and I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Is that all you've been up to? You know I'm kidding.
Most impressive, Rhonda. Our, our library is doing great things. Keep it up.
Thank you.
And just so you know, um, not that I'm all that old, but I learned how to read at the library and my mom used to take us all down. We had a million McCampbell kids. I heard the Fornose went down to one of those events actually and you had to have it down to the auditorium, but anyways. I was able to read before I went into kindergarten. It was because of a program that they had down at the library, so, uh, yeah, it's good stuff.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. All right. What's with the look, James?
Oh, nothing.
You're really bringing me down tonight.
He's laughing here.
We're going to wrap this up tonight, kids, Mr. Teslin.
What about the appointment?
I don't know, what about it?
There's a, well, there's an appointment on there.
You guys have any problems with the appointment?
I, I don't. I just want to make sure that we're compliant with, as we are.
I appreciate that. You know, I like the way you roll, man. Not really. Mr. Teslin?
No, nothing.
It's good to see that you shaved. Peanut butter?
Thursday, take advantage of the shal- Holiday Shop Hop. So businesses in downtown Burlington will stay open from five to eight, so take advantage of that. Shop local, my friends.
Well said. Counselor?
Uh, nothing, except great job to the city once again. Uh, you know, yesterday, we dealt with a pretty good weather event and, uh, streets were relatively clear this morning and, and, uh, everybody was taken care of by our first responders, so thanks. And the other nice thing was is, uh, my trash can lid did not fly away. Thanks, Don.
Uh, we had a couple of fires. This is the time when, uh, this is high peak season. So we're just going to remind everybody, please be careful, please be safe. Um, if you have some old cords, replace them. They're pretty cheap to do that. And, uh, just make sure you stay on top of that.
Are we going to discuss that or are you going to push it?
No, no, we are not, my friend. Also, and also just want to give a shout out to all our, uh, to our fire department. Um, good work over the last week. The snow routes, uh, just a reminder that, uh, if you're parked there, you can be towed. We need you to move your cars and please be compliant with that. Uh, it's winter time, everybody, slow down. We're used to this. We get the snow all the time, but, um, there were a lot of accidents. Um, a couple of them right, right in front of my house. Also, the holiday parade, it was phenomenal. It was awesome. I'll tell you what I saw. So many kids. I didn't throw out candy, but I took some candy from some kids. They gave it to me. You know, on their own volition, but anyways, uh, it was, it was just phenomenal, just to see the, the crowds of people. Uh, it was even a longer route, but, uh, it was just jam-packed kids all the way throughout the entire route. So that was just phenomenal. Good to see everybody participate. And also, big shout out to everybody that had a hand in decorating our downtown. It looks awesome. Uh, for all the local businesses that are lighting it up, which I love. For those that aren't participating, I would encourage you, it's about that time. If you've got some lights, put them up, light it up. It looks beautiful. I think that's it. James? Oh, uh, Annie, get better. Take care of your dog.
They voluntarily gave it?
Excuse me?
My kids cried the whole way home, taking their candy. I can't believe you do that.
James, those were the only kids that I really enjoyed taking it from. Please do continue.
Um, I think a couple of you are going to go to the Lunch and Learn tomorrow, uh, down at the Capital Theater. That'll be eleven-thirty to one, Mayor, uh, for Colin Wallenkemp. Talking about infrastructure renewal, economic expansion, sustainability and resilience, so. You can thank me later for that.
Are we on? Let's turn that off for a minute, there's a buddy.
Yeah. So, yeah. Um, I won't make it to that. So I'll be, I'll be in.
We're consoling brokenhearted children.
I'll be in Des Moines.
So, yeah.
Legislative Policy Committee meeting for the League of Cities.
Oh, do ya?
And I'll be gone on Friday as well. Iowa City Managers Association, I get to do the audit. It's a fun time.
Have fun with that one, James.
Headed by all. Um, I don't have anything else, so.
Nothing else? We're good?
Hey, I won't, I won't be here next week for the meeting. I don't know.
John won't be here next week, Steph. Are we good with everything else?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I'm not sure if Matt's going to be back or not.
We're not sure if Matt's going to be back either, Steph. Are we good with everything else, guys? Thank you, guys. Good night. I love you, bro.
I love you, man.